Have the kiddos come up front because when we say the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to hear your guys' voices. Can you guys come up front and just stand right up here so when we say the Pledge of Allegiance, we can hear you real loud and clear? I appreciate it. Thank you. There's more kiddos. Come on up. All right, I call the Board of Meditation meeting to work. Please sit down for the Pledge of Allegiance. You guys want to get us started? Go ahead, get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks a lot, guys. Welcome, everyone. Appreciate you being here this evening. The first item of business is to approve your agenda. President Agnew, the third item is the following amendment. Additional certified and classified personnel actions, item number E3. Motion by Laura. Second by Alex. Any discussion? All those in favor, see if they have a hand. Motion carries. All right, going into the next item of business, we have Barbara Helt here, who is the coach of the Garden City High School thespian students. And she is here to announce her students who have recently won an award.
All right, so this is Jack Spelman. And he is our chapter president for the thespian society. And then we also have Isaac Silva, who's a junior, and Erica Ramos, who's a sophomore. They were three of our 26 students who attended the International Thespians Conference this January. And Jack presented our book, which you can see it's printed there. But it showcases all of the things that our drama club and thespian society has done throughout the semester. And we received gold status, which means that we are one of the elite troops throughout the state. And that is the first time that that's ever happened for Western Kansas School. And then additionally, they had an all-state musical where 1,400 students from around the state could audition. And Isaac and Erica chose to audition for it. They were both cast in James and the Giant Peach, which will perform next year at the conference in Wichita at Century 2. And then possibly, we think, probably, move on to the international conference, which is in Lincoln, Nebraska. So that's a pretty big honor. Only 20 students from around the state made the cast, and two of our students made it into that elite group.
Thank you for your work with the students, Barbara. I appreciate it. On the phone.
You've got to come with them, Barbara. Isaac Silva.
Thank you. I bet you want to... You want to congratulate them? Okay. I know we need a buffalo.
Starting next year, we'll do that once a month. And then over the summer, we'll have a couple of week-long ones. It'll be interesting. Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay. Congratulations, sir.
Will do.
Jeff, what are your plans next year since you're graduating?
Actually, at the conference, I auditioned for the New York Film Academy.
What? Wow!
And I accepted there. Ironically, it's in Los Angeles, so hopefully, after appearing back from the scholarships and things, I'll be living in Los Angeles next year going to the New York Film Academy.
We'll be seeing more of you, it sounds like, in the near future.
Hopefully.
Awesome. Don't forget where you came from.
Oh, never mind.
It was credit. All right, well, thank you. Our next item of business is a building presentation from Alta Brown. Julie?
All right. And I might also mention, this is not part of our presentation, but Andy Alvarado, where is she?
I'm a third grade teacher.
No. She's a third-grade teacher in our building, and she helps a lot with the high school performances, too.
Yeah, she's my assistant director, so she went with us to conference, and she's a huge part of this, too.
And the conference was at Kansas State, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to give that plug there.
All right. Well, and I say that because she's from Phoenix, Arizona, and I tell her all the time, "You can't leave. This district relies too much." All right. I would like to, first of all, ask all of the presenters to please come up and join me. As Gloria said, I'm Julie Cochrane, and I'm the principal at Alta Brown Elementary. And I have several presenters here who are going to help, and a couple of students, Tom and Andrea. I also would like to acknowledge other staff members sitting in the audience. So if the other Alta Brown staff members, if you'd please stand so they can also see you. So, thank you. All right, and there's Andy. All right, tonight, we would just like to show you all the wonderful things that are happening at Alta Brown. All right, tonight's topics, we're going to start out talking about some of the academic things that we're doing in math and reading, and move into how we're building character at Alta Brown, parent involvement, student activity, school spirit. A healthy body equals a healthy mind, and end with our Alta Brown mission. So sit back, relax, and enjoy our showcase. Starting off with engaging in math. Oops. Uh-oh, I want to go backward. All right, this is Caitlin Binsman. She's a kindergarten teacher at Alta Brown.
I'm on our math committee, and this shows some of the things we do in math. This is a picture of our monthly estimation jars that we do. We have one for grades K1 and then one for grades 2 through 4, so that it's differentiated for them. We talk about it at our morning assemblies on Monday morning and get the kids really excited about it. We also give them their award at the weekly Monday assemblies. And it says "Math" was on it, like that award up there, and they get really excited. And they're great at supporting each other. We also do trivia questions the rest of the week, so we split them up. So there's a week that kindergarten has a trivia question, first and second have a trivia question, and the third and fourth do. And then we showcase them on our Math Hall of Fame for the school year. Also, we're working, a lot of the grade levels are doing really awesome things to encourage math fluency. And so this is just something that our 4th grade teachers do. It's the math ninjas, and they get up there once they've become fluent with their multiplication facts. Another thing we do to get them excited is we celebrate a Hundred's Day. In kindergarten, we're really working on getting them to understand the concept of a hundred and get them up to there. And so we celebrated Hundred's Day. This is my class. We made a snack mix, and they had to divide things into piles of 10 and make 100 of them. So we worked on counting by tens, and we made a Fruit Loop necklace, and we organized them by tens in their different colors. Some classes did cup stacking. We wrote about what we wanted to be and do when we are 100. And we aged their photos so that they could see what they looked like when they were 100. And it just got them really excited about math in overall.
All right. Next up is Gina Galpin. She's going to talk to us about Engage New York. All right, we are excited about Engage New York at Alta Brown. This shows a variety of pictures of students working through their math problems. They use whiteboards, and they come up to the front of the class and share their strategies with each other. They're doing number bonds and take diagrams to show their work. And they're learning new ways of doing math, and that there's more than one way to solve a problem. And they're learning how to explain their thinking and talk about how they're solving and the strategies that they're using. So that's what's going on with Engage New York. Next area we're going to talk about is rethink. So Julie asked me to speak about some of the things that we're doing differently or excited about in our building. And as you can see, we've got kids of all ages reading and doing different things. I'm on the literacy committee, and one of the things that we're doing this year is author's chair. And each child gets a turn being in the author's chair and telling the classmates about a book that they like. And then this is hanging out in the hallway where everyone can see them in their picture. And then they have a description about the book and what they liked about it. And hopefully, will generate some enthusiasm for the book. And Penny is up here in the corner, and so we wanted her to tell you what she had to share. That was so great.
Well, our library needed some updating, so we've had some community companies and individuals who have generously donated to our library. And this was our business partner, St. Catherine's Hospital, and they gave us a check for books for our library. And we sent them a thank you card. That's some of the new books that we purchased.
Julie asked us to think outside of the box this year when we have our traditional literacy night, to do something different. And so the committee got together and someone threw out the idea of having a dinner theater. And we all liked that idea. Usually, we serve food and we have some kind of activity, but it's usually pizza or some sandwiches. And we're like, what else can we do differently? So we set up our gymnasium with tables and decorations, and we had Gold Corral come through and serve spaghetti and salad. And we all faced the stage where we had members from the Garden City Community College classes come and put on a couple of skits for us. They did the Three Little Pigs and Where the Wild Things Are From. And it was very relaxed, and with people eating and relaxing, there wasn't that talking where you have to, you know, try to be louder than they are. It was very relaxed. It was a nice evening. We felt it was a very successful evening, and every family left with a copy of a book that night also to go home with them. And just last week, we had our spelling bee in our winters up here. We have four boys that are representing Alta Brown. And it was a great spelling bee. I was surprised how well they did. They went up and did 4th and 5th grade level words and did very well. And it was always an exciting thing. Parents like to come and watch, and the kids are happy to be representing us.
And I forgot to introduce Barb Walls as a 3rd grade teacher, and Penny Cruz is our media specialist. Thank you, ladies. All right. Next, we're going to talk about how we build character and relationships in our building.
We do kindness revolution. Each class has a kindness bracelet that is given to students for acts of kindness, and it is run by student council. And if you get it five times, you can get, like, your name on a wall. And if you get it 10 times, you get a certificate. If you get it 20 times, you get the kindness pencil. And if you get it 50 times, you get a free snack after school. And when students do something kind, they get their name on a hand. And when teachers do something kind, they get their name on a heart.
All right, that was Tom Tran. He's a 4th grader at Alta Brown. Next up.
I'm going to talk about character counts. Our school does a character counts program, which is six pillars. That includes the trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. So what we do with this is each month, we focus on a character count trait. And so at the end of the month, the teachers then select one or two students from their classrooms that have displayed that character trait. They are then presented on the Monday assembly, and then they take a picture. Then they go on our Hall of Fame, and then they get to also eat lunch with the counselor that day.
Anna Harutia, she's our literacy coach. All right, next up, we're going to talk to you a little bit about how we get our parents involved. Starting again with Ms. Galpin. All right. We knew we had a lot of parents with a lot of questions about Engage New York. So we had a parent night on October 7th, and it was to go over curriculum, but our focus that night was Engage New York. And we started off with all the parents in the gym. I presented the English session, and Mercedes, our assistant principal, did the Spanish. And so we had the opportunity for all of our parents to be involved. And we talked about how Engage New York was chosen and how it aligned to the standards and why we thought it was a program that would help our students reach the standards that they needed. And so we had that conversation in the gym. I also showed them examples from all the grade levels so they would understand the models that the students needed to use in order to understand the math and hopefully lead them to doing mental math in the future. Then the parents had the opportunity to go to their grade levels and meet with the teachers so that they could ask more questions and get more information specific to their child's grade level. Mercedes Ramos is the assistant principal at Alta Brown, and Victor Nellis.
So in addition to our parent meetings where we were trying to encourage parents to come and learn more about what's going on in school, we also are in, we're working with an organization called Families Together. And there's actually an organization that helps families cope with children with disabilities on being successful in school. But besides just the children with disabilities, the ideas that they have also help other children. So last year, when we started with our parent meetings, Families Together came to our meetings, and they actually, you know, told the parents that they were out there. And this year, what we did was they compiled a survey and took the top three choices of what parents felt they needed more assistance in. And bullying was the first one that we did in September. They wanted to know what bullying looked like and what schools were doing and how to handle bullying situations. And then the second one that we did, which is not up here, but the second one was the stress management. They wanted to know how to handle stressful situations and, you know, whether they were happening at home or whether they were happening at school, how to be able to deal with that from a parent's perspective. And then in March, which is coming up, the third theme that we're going to have or the topic is going to be on behaviors. They want to just know in general what kinds of behaviors, how they can handle certain behaviors from their children. So we're really excited because Families Together is part of an organization that's out there in the community. And now our families at Alta Brown and at Victor and Ellis now have a link and an organization that they can go to for extra help if they need it.
Don't leave.
All right, and this is also PTO. So PTO is, we are really proud of our PTO organization at our school. Again, PTO is, you know, the parents, the teachers. And we have about consistently, on a monthly basis, we have about five to six parents that are there every month. And then we have honor committee from our schools. We have three teachers that are there. They're assigned to that committee, so they represent that PTO monthly. And then we also have two other teacher representations, representatives that come and then have issues or, you know, if they want to ask for things from PTO, that will be there that month. So we're really proud of that. PTO is strong with our parents. It's got our teachers, and then Julie and I are also present every month. And some of the things that we've done is that we've purchased some rec and recs for one of our grade levels, when there weren't enough rec and recs for Engage New York. And we also are very big on collecting box tops, which we use that money in turn for things that our kids may need. If we need to purchase more math supplies or we need to purchase, you know, anything that our children are lacking in. And then recently, we purchased the cups. I know if you drive around town, there's some schools that have the cups, and we purchased ours for Alta Brown, and it looks really nice out there, so we're proud of that, too.
The next parent activity that we do every year is our annual music program and dinner that we serve to our families. It always occurs on the first Friday of December, and it's a fun time for everyone. Next, we're going to talk a little bit about student activities. Andrea's going to talk to us about.
Honestly, mine is, honestly, mine is a team of six 4th graders. We meet twice a week. We work on a long-term problem and spontaneous. We will compete at state competition March 7. The drama club is open to 2nd and 3rd graders. They meet once a week. This year, the 3rd grade performs the Lawrence for school parents, the school parents and nursing home. 2nd grade will perform the fairy tale trio.
The student council is two students from each 3rd and 4th grade classroom. We recycle twice a week. We sell snacks twice a week. And we do a movie night once a year, and we did a food drive.
School spirit.
The food drive we did was during December, and we had a competition among, like, I mean, grade levels. And 4th grade collected the most, and the food went to the nutrition room.
This is Connie Correo. She's one of our science teachers.
And I am part of the spirit week. And during our spirit week, we had red ribbon, and that would be on keeping kids or encouraging them to stay off drugs. During our spirit week, we started off that week with wearing love attire, and that would symbolize love yourself, be drug-free. We started off that day with a drug dog demo from the Garden City Police Department. And then on October 28th, it was dressed like a rock star for being drug-free rocks. And then this would be October 29th, and it was wear costumes for say due to drugs. And these are basically our teams. On the left, top-left side would be kindergarten team. And then the bottom-left side would be our 3rd grade team. The center ones would be the 2nd grade class, and then the 3rd grade class. The top-right side would be our 2nd grade team, or 3rd, yeah, 2nd grade team. And then our 4th grade team in the center. And then the bottom-left or right side would be our 1st grade team.
Okay, thanks, Connie. Ms. Harutia.
We also celebrated Kansas Day on January 29th. And the committee worked really hard to make sure that these activities were tied to the standards. But we had the zoo come in and bring animals to show to the kids. We also had somebody from the college come in and show the kids how to row. The kids also did things such as dancing and learning about the corn and the wheat and everything. And I also think, well, the newspaper was there, and I think there was a couple of pictures in the newspaper on Friday where we celebrated Kansas Day. So in case you guys got the newspaper Friday, you can see our pictures.
Up in the top-left, if any of you know Al Miller and Joe Ursick. They came over the lunch period and played while our kids were eating lunch. And it was fun. The kids got up and started dancing, and so they had a good time. All right, a healthy body equals a healthy mind. Penny?
I'm on the health committee. So the first picture up there, when we had our dinner theater, Valerie Raymond does a lot of our contacting for the health committee. But she contacted somebody at the rep, Megan McPhee, and she came in and talked about keeping healthy, healthy foods, and activity. We also have Valerie goes around, our nurse goes around this month during February and does a dental hygiene unit with all the kids. And we also have, these two pictures are part of the walking trail. We have the kids, if they take a lap around the playground, they get a punch in the car. And once they get 20 punches, they get a foot. And once they've collected five feet, they get to get a T-shirt. And each lap around the playground's about a quarter of a mile, so they've done a few miles by the time they get a T-shirt. And Valerie has done a lot of promotion with the 5210, to eat five fruits and veggies, two hours or less of screen time, one hour of physical exercise, and zero sugary drinks. She's done some, talking about that with both staff and with the parents that we have. So those are some of the things we have going on with the health committee. Oh, okay, that's right. And we also had the Y come in, and they offer each year a year-long membership to some of our kids. And we had four of our kids got year-long memberships, named in Kiesak and Savannah, but they get to go to the Y for free for a year. They came in the morning and presented all those to the kids.
I might tell you that our counselor was sick today, and our nurse was sick today. So Penny and Anna are filling in for them, so we appreciate that. Okay? Last thing I want to close with tonight is Alta Brown's mission statement. All the things they have talked to you about tonight are what make us unique. And I would like to end it by just showing you what our mission statement is and point out how closely the things that we do at Alta Brown ties into this. We at Alta Brown are dedicated to providing a positive multicultural learning environment in which academic and social skills are developed in every student. So we hope, I hope we've showcased some of those things tonight that we do to tie into our mission and to provide success for everyone at Alta Brown.
Nice presentation. Any questions from the board? I, I mean, your mission is amazing, and you guys do a great job of addressing the social skills and the life skills, I mean, across the board. I mean, from rewarding positive behavior to talking about nutrition. The Families Together program, Mercedes, can you tell us a little bit more about what that organization is and who they're, what group they're part of?
Yeah, they're here. They're based in Garden City. And last year, they approached us, they came to some buildings and talked to me about Victor and Ellis and Alta Brown. And they wanted to take part in that. I think part of their grant that they get, some funding for that, was to start going into different buildings or different schools. And so they came to Alta Brown specifically because we have self-contained children. And then also in Victor and Ellis, we have SMH, TMH, the Spirit Movement, and Child Children. And so they asked us if they could be part of just educating our parents because they felt like they had a lot to offer to our parents. But many people don't know that that organization exists.
I didn't know it existed. Is it a standalone organization, or is it umbrella under something?
It's based under, I couldn't tell you that, but it's based, I know that they go to different, they do different workshops in different buildings. Topeka is where their main building is. And so they're just a branch from that. But they get funding, and so they basically come out and then just give our parents all kinds of information on how to deal with stressful things that are tied to, you know, children with emotional disabilities. But they know that the activities that they have and the advice that they give parents is good for all parents, not just for children with disabilities. So we've taken advantage of that at Alta Brown. And actually, we had the meetings that occurred, the last two that we've had, we've had about 60 parents total that come.
Well, it's great that your parents are taking, you know, taking the opportunity and making the most of it.
Yeah, and this is just the beginning because, you know, like I said, last year, they came and were part of our parent meetings where they just introduced themselves and let the parents know that they were out there. And then this year, they started offering workshops to the families. And so the numbers themselves are really not that grand because if you look at, you know, we have 340 children, but we have 60 parents total. And they also separate into Spanish on one side, English on the other side. So we're yet working on how to figure out how to reach more parents. But this is the beginning for us, this is a step.
Well, I'd like to send them a note thanking them for their involvement in our district. So if you could get some more information. So, if you could get some more information to, to someone in this office, that would be great.
And they do it for free because they don't charge us at all. You know, all, all it is is basically our time. And I'll just add on that our teachers, they set up the workshop. We provide the facility. We provide, you know, the snacks, things like that for our parents. But they provide the brochures, the flyers, all of that. So, I mean, it's an awesome organization that's out there for us. So, I will be too.
Great. Thank you, Mercedes. Any other questions?
I just want to say, I think it's, I'm not sure that it's in every school, but the weekly assemblies, you give rewards to kids on a weekly basis?
Yes.
That's, that's just great. There's time and feedback.
Well, we do, we do every Monday morning. We call them our Monday morning assemblies. The teachers set that up as far as what they want me to present. They come up with their own certificates and stuff. Some of it's academic-based, especially in kindergarten and first grade. I get a lot of, you know, this child can count to 100 or recognize their number still at 30, or they can write their letters or they know their sounds. And then I give them certificates on Monday morning. And then we also get the kindness certificates that we give out as well. We do a lot of our, like, for example, when the YMCA came, anytime we have like special speakers or presentations, we do it usually first thing on Monday morning and so.
You're doing your part in raising and developing responsible citizens, for sure. Great foundation work there. Thanks, Julie. Can I have the student presenters come through and we'd like to shake their hands? Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your participation. Good job. Thanks for helping. Do you want to help them or apply? Great job. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks. Is there any correspondence you need to discuss?
Chair, no correspondence, just a recognition reminder. I noticed we have a candidate for the election in April in our island. Miss Kennedy, I know she served on the calendar committee and it's good to see a candidate here.
Jennifer Stanley.
Jennifer Stanley.
Yes. Jennifer, welcome. Thanks for being here. Thanks for mentioning that. All right. Moving on to consent agenda. I'm presenting that we approved the consent agenda previously amended. Motion by Laura. Second by Tim. Any discussion? All right, Dr. Dennis, we're ready for the state assessment overview.
Okay. Very good. Every year about this time, I come to you and, and talk to you about what the state assessment program is going to look like this year. And this year's no different. As you are well aware, there were some problems with the state assessment program last year. There were some technology issues at CETE, which is based in Lawrence. There were some problems with a denial of service attack, so there was some hacking. And all in all, it was not a very good experience for anybody last year. It was a new program that we were trying to use. So, the, the result of that was we have no scores from last year. The state has not released any scores from last year's test. So, in, in many ways, what should be the second year of this assessment is going to look like the first year. Some of what you hear tonight will seem obvious. But I also hope that you can see some, hear some new things as well. I'll try to communicate as clearly as I can because we all know how important clear communication is in this process. The, the main thing that we've tried to convey to teachers is we don't want this to be a semester of test prep. We want to teach our curriculum. We feel like we're on track, on the right track, and we shouldn't let assessment preparation derail us from the good things that are happening in instruction. So, we want to keep the quality instruction as our center, as our focus, as our guide, and let the rest of the things take care of themselves. So, if our curriculum is aligned, if the test is aligned to the standards, the, the assessment should take care of itself. Here are the assessments for this school year. And they will look familiar with, with some exceptions. Math, English Language Arts, Science, we do that every year. History Government has been on hiatus for a while, but it's making a comeback. Multidisciplinary Performance Task is a new test this year and it will be given to all kids grades three through eight. Eventually, I think we'll see this at the high school level as well. We'll talk a little bit more about this later. DLM stands for Dynamic Learning Map and that is the new version of the alternate assessment. That's the assessment for severely disabled students. And that is a new format. It's actually, its second year last year didn't work very well, so again, we're really getting our first good look at what it might look like as it functions this year. KELPA is the Kansas English Language Proficiency Assessment. And it's, P is, is the version of the test. KELPA is like a lot of the assessments undergoing a transition right now. So, next year, we're anticipating that being a different test. Last year was a different test, so this is an intermediary step. I don't know what we're going to be able, honestly, to, to gain from the scores on this, but we're required to give it, so we will. And then the final one, CPAS, those are assessments for career and tech ed. Every year, there are surprises. This is a snowstorm. Anyway, I thought it was funny.
I can't see it.
It's a, it's a snow. Does that help? It snowed inside the car.
Inside, oh, God.
So, okay.
The chair, you have to explain them, they lose.
Yeah, they really do. Those are some of its impacts. It'll hit you later tonight. It'll be really funny.
Come on, teach us for the test, Dr. Dean.
All right. Changes for the assessment this year. There are several changes from what we've done, done in the past. The high school assessment for math and English Language Arts in the past has been a junior level test. And this year, it will change to the 10th grade. So, that's a, that's a significant change and it changes the way the high school will approach, in some ways, instruction geared toward the test.
That will still include the other grade or not?
It still includes, everything the same grade-wise, three through eight. And then instead of 11, it's 10. The federal requirement is once in high school. In, in the past, that's meant 11th grade, it's just moved down. The state actually requested to move it to 9th grade and that was not approved by the federal level. Multidisciplinary Performance Task is a major change this year. It is a new assessment and it is what it sounds like. It is multidisciplinary. It's testing writing and content area things together. And I'll share a little bit more about that as we move forward. There are also performance tasks in math and in history government. So, in the past, they have been multiple choice tests, really. Now, they're multiple choice. There are some other item types, but there are also performance tasks that require kids to write about the content and justify their answers. This year only, the multidisciplinary performance task will take the place of the performance task in history government. But in the future, that will be also a separate test. With the state assessment, nothing really is ever written in stone, though. Changes happen on a regular basis.
I got that one.
Good. So, here's the assessment schedule. Grades three through eight are basically the same as they've been. We have science at the fourth grade level and the seventh grade level. We have history, government at sixth and eighth. Now, science will probably change in the future. It will probably move to at least fifth grade. We'll wait for state guidance on exactly what that looks like, but we think that those are going to be moving out of the current grade levels. There is still testing at the junior level. History Government is still a junior test. Science will be at the junior level as well.
Why are those moving?
I'm not sure what the rationale is. The, but that, but that's what we're hearing from the state.
Always changes trends.
Yeah. It, it is hard to make, and, and that will be especially impactful here because we've, if we move it out of the fourth grade, those elementary buildings will never have a science test. So, we'll, we'll see what that means for us as we move forward. Testing window is shorter this year. Actually, it was shorter last year as well, but in the past, it's opened about mid-February and now they're opening closer to mid-March. So, we have more tests and we have less time to do it in. So, that's causing some, somewhat of a crunch in terms of availability of technology to be able to take all the tests. It opens March 9th. That's one week before we start spring break. And then it runs through officially May 15th. We ask our schools to be done by May 8th because the May 15th deadline is a hard close. In other words, once you hit that date, you're not allowed to go back and do any makeups or if you've missed somebody. So, we're asking schools to schedule to be done early, a week early, so that if we have missed someone, we have time to go back and do makeups. DLM, Dynamic Learning Map, that's the alternate assessment, has been testing since early November. And actually, Karen, they could have gone earlier than that, if I remember correctly.
No, I don't think so.
Wasn't there, okay. But you can see the way the dates bled up to each other. They have basically a continuous assessment window from early November through the rest of the school year. They're required to do three, three rounds of it essentially within those windows. KELPA began, or begins tomorrow. There's almost 4,000 English Language learners who will take tests, four parts. So, a lot of testing and a lot of that has to be done individually, one-on-one. So, that really puts a strain on the, on the system to be able to do that. And then the CTE, the Career and Tech Ed assessments, basically from October 1st through the end of the school year. Format. The format of the assessments includes some traditional elements. There's a general test that most of our students will take. 95, 98%, maybe 99% of our kids take the general test. A small number will take the alternate test, which is the DLM. There used to be a third assessment called the CAM, Kansas Assessment of Multiple Measures. And that was also for students with disabilities, but that has now been retired. So, we have more students taking the general assessment than we used to. In terms of accommodations, for students who need Spanish, it is available as a paper copy that they can have on the math and science tests. It's not available for English Language Arts. And then the science, science assessment will also, we're anticipating changes over time, but right now, it's still the old standards. They, they have not been updated to, to measure the new standards yet. There will still be a significant number of multiple choice questions and some technology-enhanced questions. These were new last year. We've also practiced a little bit with the break kite day. An example of a technology-enhanced question would be having a question and a set of answers that you have to drag to one column or another. Is this an equivalent or is it not equivalent? Something like that. Another example might be placing a graph, a point on a graph in the correct place. These are items that have to have a computer in order to be, to be answered correctly. And those are all machine scored. The difference this year is going to be the performance task because they have to be human scored. And we don't really know yet what that's going to look like. The state hasn't given us clear direction on how we're going to score them, who's going to score them, any of the details on that. So, we will, we're looking forward to finding out what that looks like. KELPA, the KELPA P is also locally scored, so that takes quite a bit of our local staff members' time. Okay. Multidisciplinary Performance Task. This is the new one. And this is probably the biggest change that we have on the assessments this year. Students, as I said, in grades three through eight will take it. They will take one. And the prompts will either be in history government or in science. So, they'll be given a prompt and they'll be asked to write about that content. For students in six and eight, this, the MDPT takes the place of the performance assessment. I'll try to lay this out as clearly as possible.
That's your job. I get it.
Okay. It's getting better. It's getting better. There are two parts on the MDPT, each taking about 50 minutes. In part one, on the computer, and this is all done through the